Central School District Education Meeting for August 10th. A order. Board members present this evening. We have seven board members present, Mr. Dunn and Ms. Steinbeck are not here this evening. So with that, please rise and join me in the congratulations. Thank you. What's that?
Emily is coming.
Oh, Emily is here, so joining us. Thank you. So the first order of business is to the administrative office for board members who were not present at July meeting. Do we have Jeannie, who do we have for that? Okay, so let's start that process first. All right. Let's do it with Michelle.
Mr. Skamarzki, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Board of Education member according to the best of your ability?
Mike, at this point, I request that my nomination be rescinded. As you pointed out at the last meeting, I have been doing it for a number of years.
Sure.
Perhaps it's time for someone else to do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we will withdraw the nomination for Joanne Taylor for Deputy Treasurer. Is there any other nominations for Deputy Treasurer, Joanne?
I'd like to nominate Michelle Skamarzki.
Okay, very good. Anyone, any seconds? Mark, all those in favor? You can vote yours. I didn't. Approved. Congratulations. So shall she be sworn in as the Deputy Treasurer? Thank you, Joanne, for your previous service in that role.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of Board of Education Deputy Treasurer according to the best of your ability?
I do.
Thank you, Michelle, for serving in that role.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Board of Education Assistant Clerk according to the best of your ability?
I will.
Okay, the next order of business is the draft minutes for June 22nd. John was not here. Mark, you were not here, and Michelle, you were not here. Any comments or questions on the minutes for June 22nd? Seeing none, any motion to approve that? Jennifer, second, Kathleen, all those in favor? All those abstaining? Two, very good, thank you. Next, we have the draft minutes for the July 5th organizational and regular meeting. Cheryl, you are not there, and Michelle, and Joanne. Without any motion to approve the minutes, any comments or questions, revisions? Seeing none, Kathleen, second. Anyone? Who's here? Emily, you can go ahead, or Emily can second? Oh, Mark, I'm sorry. All those in favor? All those abstaining? Approved. Next order of business is the board forum. I'll start at my left with Michelle. Anything? Nothing? Cheryl? Mark? Jennifer? Kathleen? Joanne? Emily? And I don't have any at this time either. So we have two items on the public forum, so I will read the public content message first, and then we'll move into the district-wide safety plan. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Crema Central School District may address the Board on matters concerning programs and/or operations of the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the Board do not directly respond to such concerns in public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the present or superintendent will contact the individual in the near future. Those persons wish to address the Board will be recognized by the Chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the Board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protection, it must be stressed that the business forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The Board President will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of our business. In addition, any remarks which are defamatory or stigmatizing are prohibited. Will be cleared out of our all common, shall we limit to five minutes? So our first item will be the district-wide safety plan. Just have, it's not a public hearing, right, Joe? This is more just a comment.
Department of the Public Hearing, the safety plan of the district required to be annually reviewed and approved.
Yep.
As part of the regulation, there needs to be opportunity for a 30-day period for anybody in the community who wants to comment on the safety plan. That 30-day period has now expired.
Okay.
We don't have any additional comments that have been received by the district. And this was one last opportunity for anybody to provide any comments or to put through our public portion of the meeting.
Very good, and then later on, the regular business, we'll then go ahead and have proof of the plan. Very good. Board members, any comments on the district-wide safety plan? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next part of our public forum. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak or address the Board? Daryl, by yourself? Seeing none, we'll move on to the reports and presentations of the superintendent, update on summer planning.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Buno, and I want to welcome our board members back to their board service. It's been a while since we've met, and I want to welcome members of the community who are here in person or maybe watching the meeting during the live stream. There's a lot of work preparing for September going on in the district. I just want to provide a brief overview of what's occurring. In regard to the construction that you may be seeing in several buildings and outside of the buildings, this work is part of Phase Three of a $39.7 million capital project, which was approved in the spring of 2017. The work is including replacement of all of the windows at the Janay Elementary School building, including the district administrative portion, which has already been completed in the spring. Additionally, the Janay Building is receiving complete renovations to the corridor restrooms as well as some other work within the interior of the building. So we have multiple contractors working on site, and they are pacing that project to be prepared for opening. There will be remaining work that will have to be done. The larger windows in the gymnasium and the auditorium are not received yet by the district. However, we will be able to open school and use those facilities. So that work will continue off-hours when the students and the staff are not teaching. But Janay Building is receiving a lot of work. Additionally, the parking lot and the sidewalks, which were in pretty bad shape, on the Route Four side of the building are being replaced, as well as some other drainage and other parking lot issues on the side of the building closer to the playground. So there's a lot of work happening at Janay. At DPS, we also have a window replacement occurring in the front of the building as well as parking lot and driveway replacements, which includes drainage, new drainage for stormwater management. And there was a little bit of a delay in that project, but we've moved past it in terms of working with the town on a permit to be able to tie in to the the drainage system of the town. Additionally, we've got a little bit of work going on at Belltop as well as, obviously, the Columbia High School turf project is very visible. The turf is completely done. It has been replaced. We can use the turf, but we can't use the facility yet because the track replacement isn't finished. The track servicing has been done, and we expect Monday or Tuesday that the striping and the numbering of the running lanes will be completed. So the first week of practice, Mr. Leonard and Mr. Jones have coordinated the schedule in such a way that we'll be using other sites, some of our own, as well as Hudson Valley. But we believe by the second week of practice, the stadium will be completely usable. There have been really no problems with that particular project. So we'll be ready to go second week of practice. Additionally, very importantly, the the community is aware, and the Board is aware of some of our challenges related to the operation of our school buses last school year, including the shortage of drivers, which is a national problem. Every district in the country is experiencing a lack of sufficient number of bus drivers. I'm happy to report that both of our senior bus drivers, Carrie Anne Rudolph and Jeff Smith, have been working on a new routing of our transportation for elementary, middle school, and high school. They have been able to achieve some efficiencies, and they have reduced the number of bus runs by approximately seven runs. So currently, we have a total of 60 permanent bus routes, and we have about 60 permanent drivers. It may be off by one, I may be off by one. To Marissa's credit, we've been able to recruit five new bus drivers as well. So we're in fairly good shape in terms of operating our transportation routes. With that being said, there are going to be changes that we will be communicating to the community. Mr. Adam is working with me and the Transportation Department. For many years, because we had the drivers that we needed, we were able to provide, in some neighborhoods, door-to-door pickup. We are not going to be able to do that and be able to deliver the kids safely and on time, given the number of drivers that we have. So we will be informing those neighborhoods that will be impacted by this of the change. We'll be informing citizens of the identified bus stops. We're hoping that the community will recognize that being able to know that your child bus is coming, when it's coming, and what we had to go through last year in terms of rerouting during the day, our afternoon runs with many students being dropped off late because we were running one bus to deliver a group of students and then circling back and pick up another. That, while this may be an adjustment for the community, it will be a positive adjustment in terms of making sure that our transportation busing runs a lot more smoothly. I want to thank Carrie Anne and Jeff for the work that they've done. I want to thank Marissa for her recruitment of the drivers, and there'll be a lot of public information coming out regarding this. I also want to thank Ms. Wager. Behind the scenes, Ms. Wager has done a lot to support the Transportation Department with new technology and support. Linda was able to arrange a service through the Northeast Regional Information Center, which provided some training in our new TransFinder routing system to Carrie Anne and Jeff, and I appreciated that support, and I know they appreciated that support. So we're looking in pretty good shape, much better than last year as far as busing. Ball sports starts 8:22 for the varsity and junior varsity level. Marissa has a new staff orientation plan. I'm sure she will talk about that when it comes to committee reports. We have our welcoming back staff professional development plan, Mr. Stiles put together, that will be going out this week. And we have hired a new SRO for the high school to replace the SRO who retired, and that will be Ed Ashley. And we've had some conversations with the chief about Ed, and I've communicated with Ed and involving him in some upcoming training that will be occurring through Questar. One significant issue that I want to bring to the Board's attention, you may recall that several years ago, we adopted attendance zone transition plan. We changed our attendance zones, and we had an outside study done. What we're finding is that the enrollment, as projected by that study at Belltop, has not materialized. And so the enrollment at Belltop is much lower than we might have projected. So the overcrowding that we were concerned about hasn't really occurred. However, enrollment at Red Mill is quite high because there are a number of students that are registering new to the district who reside currently in what used to be referred to as the Oak Hill Apartments, but it is now Eagle Rock Apartments, Townhouses of Rensselaer. So we've made an adjustment that we think will help maintain reasonable class sizes at both schools. And we, what we would like to do is, effective last week, any new students, in other words, new to the district, you may recall that that apartment complex was once Red Mill, and we had moved it to any new students, kindergartners, for example, or any grade level who don't have family members already at Red Mill, we will be having them attend Belltop school. So we wouldn't, if a child has a sibling in our kindergarten, they will remain at Red Mill. But anybody new to the district that would know wouldn't really have any connection to either school, we are going to ask them to attend Belltop, and that will be kind of a modest adjustment. That area will kind of be what we call a flex zone, depending on what our class sizes and what we think that that will balance off. The numbers at Red Mill are quite high. I don't know if you want to talk about that.
Yeah, we have currently five sections of kindergarten at Red Mill. 93 students. Just in kindergarten alone, 46 of them are coming from that area. So it was important for us to make that adjustment.
So Jeff, is this everybody coming in this year, or everybody coming in from here, here forward?
The date at which we communicated this to the principals was
August 1st.
As of August 1st. So if somebody registered and they're assigned to a classroom right now at Red Mill prior to August 1st, they were made at Red Mill. We're not, we didn't move any kids that had already registered or families that anticipated that their children would be going to Red Mill. Is that correct?
That's correct.
The only other thing I want to update the Board on, at the last board meeting, Mr. Mann brought forward a recommendation, and the Board supported it, to assist the Soren School Field with their redevelopment and upgrading of their field. Ms. Wager had reached out to representatives of Soren School. We've worked out an agreement where we are, we are affording the cost of the materials that were necessary for redoing the field. We think that was a great idea. We also utilize that field for our school teams, and we own the property.
Great. That concludes my report. Thanks, Jeff. Just one question on the class sizes. Could we just get an updated average class size by building in grade?
Sure.
I'm going to send that out.
Once we have that.
Would you like a full report?
Very good. That concludes my report.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other questions for Jeff? Thank you. Moving on to discussion items, we have five discussion items on the agenda. Attendance Committee, the comprehensive student attendance policy for 2022-23. Any updates you want to share with us?
Yes, I've asked members of the Attendance Committee to have a summer meeting. You know that over the course of the last three years, really, due to COVID-19, we have been supporting students and helping them adjust through the pandemic. That has included some extra support, some modification of what would typically be our attendance reporting and our attendance practices. Some of our attendance indicators have gone down, as has every school district in the state. So we want to have some conversations about improving attendance, getting past the pandemic, looking at our policy, and reinforcing our policies in a manner that we used to prior to the pandemic. There are also some unique situations where we do need to accommodate to support children, but there's a sense that we're going to be normalizing this September, and we want to get back to promoting and encouraging positive attendance among all of our students and gain the support of our families. So we're going to have a summer meeting to talk about all that before we roll out the brochure. If any Board members, Joanne Taylor is on the Attendance Committee, Mark Mann is on the Attendance Committee, and if any of you have, after reviewing that brochure, comments, concerns, or questions regarding student attendance, I'd be happy to incorporate those into our discussion at the meeting.
Good, any comments, members? I just think just make sure that whatever changes, it is a shift for people and parents and kids, and making sure we're just communicating as much as we can to the community. Right. Thank you. Next item is proposed change in policy, school safety plans, committee's second reading. We have the first reading at the last reading.
Yes.
Any changes or updates since then?
There have been no changes since the first reading.
Board members, any comments on the second reading, the policy? All right, seeing none, we'll go to move that, is that on the agenda later on for the next meeting? The policy.
I think that the policy, policy should be on the, on the agenda. Is that on the agenda?
Policy is on the agenda.
For adoption.
So we'll move to the next meeting? Am I missing?
The safety plan is on the regular business agenda.
Okay.
Which includes the SROs.
But that's not the policy, right?
I don't.
That's under.
We may have erred and not, but it should have been on the consent agenda or the regular agenda.
Okay.
So we'll put it on for the next meeting.
Sounds good. Okay. Next item for our discussion is the funding of the bus, the bus purchase reserve and capital reserve. There's a memo from Linda about that, you want to talk about a little bit?
Sure, just quickly, we have two reserves that require Board of Education approval in order to fund them. One is the bus purchase reserve, and the second is the newly established capital reserve. So we are in the process of completing our year ending June 30th, 2022. So at the August 24th meeting, I expect to bring to you proposition to fund both of these reserves, the bus purchase reserve in an amount up to $250,000. That's typical with what we fund this reserve with each year. Right now, the reserve balance is about $950,000. I'll be requesting an additional up to $250,000, which will bring that reserve balance to almost $1.2 million. That's a little bit higher than we typically carry. The reason for that is because we purchased, we put in a purchase water for a bus this year, a 30-passenger four-wheel-drive bus that we did not receive in 21-22. We expected in October of '22. So we will be paying for that bus as well. That's a little over $82,000, plus the purchase of the eight buses that we passed the proposition for in May. That's $752,000. So that will bring that reserve balance down to about $350,000. And then we typically, each year, will put the state aid that we earn from the bus purchases in there. We expect that to be roughly $500,000 in '22-23, a little less than we normally get because of that one bus. We won't have the aid on that. And then the other is the capital reserve that's newly established this year. Once we finalize our numbers, I will look to put money into that capital reserve. And I set an amount up to $1 million, but it will depend on where our fund balances come out to be. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I mean, I mentioned this to Jeff previously, that I just want to be careful with the capital reserve. I understand the, the need for putting money aside for construction purposes and saving on those costs. I just want to make sure that, you know, with the, the way the economy is and things like that, that even with the, you know, the recommended limits on the reserves for the general fund, that we have enough money to be able to do things that we want to do as a district and not be locked into the capital reserve where we have a lower approval piece. Again, I support the idea of the capital reserve. The funding amounts, to me, are going to be the ones that I want to be interested in, see how, how much we want to put in there, or are there other things from instructional district level that we would like to see for some of these reserves at, and for future, I guess, future budgets too? So, and I know that you're going to have some harder numbers for us as you close out the year. So I think having a good look at that will be important.
Absolutely. So at the August 24th meeting, I will have a better sense of exactly what our fund balances are. For the last two years, you will remember our, our unappropriated fund balance has been slightly high over in the 5% range, and we do really want to get that back into the 4% range. That being said, our other fund, our other reserves are properly funded at this point.
Yeah, I noticed the next one with the tax location, we probably have a few dollars in there that's coming back, right? Mark?
Yeah, and I agree with Mike, and I would just like to reiterate that we should be very cautious with this fund. The way our economy is, and the way the financial situation is in our country right now, you know, I, I agree, maybe we should look at the amount that we're considering putting in there. You know, I would rather see the money used now to buy things, to fix things. You know, I mean, one thing that comes to mind is, you know, the blinds at Red, Green Middle School are horrific when we did that tour, you know? And they all need to be replaced. So, you know, instead of putting that money in the reserve that much, why don't we buy new blinds for Green Middle? You know, so, yes, a great discussion. I just want us to be cautious with that, I can appreciate that.
So are there some things maybe we can use, is that using the O and M budget, those kinds of things with the building budgets?
Yeah, actually, this year, in the 22-23 budget, we included some extra money specifically for blinds for the elementary schools. Mr. Bickle has already started to measure and order some blinds for replacements.
When we toured Green Middle School, I mean, they all needed to be replaced. I was going to want, you know, all that one's okay for another year. But, I mean, if we're going to start putting money away in these reserves, and we can use it to, to do something like that, then, you know, I'd rather much see us do something like that.
We, we will review that, talk about that. And we just have to be mindful of bringing that undesigned fund balance to 4% or less. And since the budget is already approved, you can't exceed the overall budget amount. So we'll, Lynn and I will talk about it, see what we can do. We, we do want to start funding it because it, you know, the resolution may say up to $1 million. It doesn't mean we're recommending putting $1 million in there, but it gives us the authority to do that, not only this year, but possibly in, in future years. Because if we start to look at the, the building condition survey that our architects are developing, which will be shared in September, there's still a lot of work to do on the facility. So it's kind of a balancing act of, of making sure that we're not putting money in a box that we can't get access to without, you know, a public vote for current expenses, but also setting aside some monies to keep the local share of what will be probably a larger project. We'll be talking about this in the fall than, than the $39.7 million one that we did in 2017. Just the more we get into these projects, the more we discover broken pipes and electrical work and other things that need to be done. So it's a balancing act, you're correct.
So Linda, so we're at 5%, we really should be at 4% or under. What ding or penalty do we have? I, I mean, I know it's coming up in the audit, and they say that we're over, but is there like a impact on our funding or anything that we really need to be aware of if we're over that 4% like we are now?
We have not received notification from New York State Education Department. However, the law is that our unappropriated fund balance is at less than 4% or less of the next year's budget. So we do want to be within the legal limits. I don't, like I said, that we have not received any notification from SED at this point.
Extraordinary times, call for extraordinary measures sometimes, right? When it comes to the financing, and we know what we went through the last couple of years, and so, yep. Next item, kind of related, but let the tax litigation settlement proposals that are there, any? I'll read those quickly.
Sure. There are four tax litigation settlement proposals that you will be asked to act on this evening. The first one is Green Bush Hospitality, which is the Fairfield Inn by Marriott. The petitioner previously filed challenges during the 2018, 2019, and '20 tax years, and we settled those this past year. After the impacts of the pandemic, they had further vacancies at the hotel, and they have, again, submitted a petition to have their taxable assessment lowered from 5.2 million to 520,000. That would result in a refund of last year's taxes of approximately $105,000. This proposal that you'll be asked to act on tonight agrees to lower the taxable assessment from 5.2 million to $4 million, and that results in a refund of $26,855. The next litigation proposal involves the Regal Cinemas. The matter involves a challenge to the 2021 assessment for the movie theater. The movie theater is currently assessed at $2,733,400. Uh, the movie theater, uh, is currently assessed at two million, seven hundred thirty-three thousand, four hundred dollars. They claimed, um, an assessment to reduce the assessment to two hundred seventy-three thousand, three hundred forty dollars, which would have resulted in a fifty-five thousand dollar refund. They agreed to discontinue that proceeding, um, in exchange for us moving forward to reduce their assessment from the two point seven million dollars to one million, six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That means that in twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, we will, the amount of taxes that we'll receive is twenty-three thousand, five hundred seventy-four dollars less than what we would have otherwise expected. The next, uh, settlement agreement regards, um, is in regards to the Target store. This is a challenge to the twenty-twenty-one assessment. Um, they are currently assessed in twenty-one, twenty-two at eleven point four million dollars. They claim to petition to reduce the assessment to five point seven million dollars. That would result in a refund of approximately a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars of last year's taxes. In exchange for that, they will discontinue that proceeding in exchange for the district, um, reducing the assessment from eleven point four million dollars to eleven million, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. That will result in a reduction of the twenty-two, twenty-three taxes of three thousand, five hundred fifty-two dollars. And then the, the final litigation settlement involves the Green Bush Station, which is the Green Bush Station Apartment Complex located on Columbia Turnpike. So the petitioner has agreed to discontinue two pending proceedings that they have in exchange for a reduction in assessment. So they have an assessment, they have a, a claim in for twenty-twenty-one taxes and twenty-one, twenty-two taxes. They would like to see their assessment decreased from nine million, forty-six thousand to nine hundred and four thousand dollars. That would result in a two-year refund of almost three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. They have agreed to discontinue those proceedings in exchange for us lowering their assessment from the nine million, forty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars to eight million dollars for twenty-two, twenty-three. That will result in a reduction of taxes for the current year of twenty-three thousand, four hundred twenty-nine dollars. That's a summary, and then in the, under the regular business, you'll be asked to act on each one of those settlements. Are there any questions on them?
I guess the question I have is, and, and there's a lot at once, so maybe that's more my question. Um, is it related to COVID that they're saying that all this assessment went down and, and how do they value that? Because Regal wasn't open?
Yes, each one of the, each one of these have, claims are coming from a reduction in business or hotel resident, you know, reservations due to the pandemic is what they are claiming.
I'll give the hotel what Target, I mean, come on.
Target, if you recall, is not, is not a large reduction. The target, um, will result. That will result in a thirty-five hundred dollars reduction in our taxes that we receive.
So there.
Is the town agreeing to this too?
Yes.
Or they're voting on it?
Yes, the town is waiting for the district to approve it. The town is in support of it, and our attorneys are, uh, recommending it.
So total loss to the district?
Cause three of the four are discontinued, correct?
Yes, so twenty-three thousand, twenty-six thousand, and another twenty-three thousand. So, so it's about, it's less than fifty thousand dollars or approximately fifty thousand dollars. In exchange for what we would be issuing is refunds in the amount of about five hundred thousand dollars.
If we don't challenge their, I mean, wouldn't.
Well, that, that's if we don't challenge. These, these, um, negotiations have been going on between our attorneys and their attorneys for some time now. So, and this is the settlement that they have come to.
So when can we reassess them again? Because, you know, you're, you're going to see a difference in twenty-two and twenty-three. When, when can we then go?
Right, and the, the assessments are, the assessments are done by the, you know, through the town. Uh, so I don't know if that will change after twenty-two, twenty-three, but these are the, uh, proposals for twenty-two, twenty-three.
So the, the funds that are, were put aside for these potential refunds?
So right now, the only one that's requiring a refund is the Green Bush Hospitality, and that would be from the twenty-one, twenty-two tax cert reserve, so we have the money for that. At the August twenty-fourth meeting, I'll be giving you a review of the reserves, and we will look to shift money from the twenty-two reserve to the twenty-three reserve. So these are affecting the twenty-three reserve. These are, these do not, um, contain refunds. But we have money left over in the twenty-one, twenty-two reserve that we'll be looking now to open a twenty-two, twenty-three reserve because we're already getting claims in against that.
So we're resolved on all the twenty-one, twenty-two claims? That's why we're moving to?
We're not reserved, we're not resolved on all of them. No, we'll maintain a balance there. Um, but we will close out the two thousand eighteen reserve, take any money back into the general fund, fund the new reserve for twenty-two, twenty-three.
I think that'll be the interesting year for me is see what they do with twenty-two, twenty-three, after some of these things that happened in twenty-one, twenty-two.
We've already received about five claims for this year.
Any other big company, Target, Home Depot?
Oh, no, 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 they're different, they're different claims.
It'll be interesting to see those, yeah.
I guess I could see it. I used to go down these places, but they're not, you know, so, um.
This strictly has to do with their business and their loss of business.
I just kind of wonder what the loss of business is to Target.
Well, isn't it just saying really the commercial properties, values going down, which?
I think as a business practice, some of these larger companies do this on a regular basis to lower their assessment, uh, reduce their tax liability. We specifically contract with the Ferrari front for, uh, separate arrangement where they negotiate, but they believe to be as opposed to the refund. So, um, yeah, I would, I would agree that in some cases, like the movies, uh, and, uh, and the hotel. You could definitely see that, see that, you know, not to single out Target, but, um, you know, I think as a business practice, I choose to do that.
Okay, any other questions for Linda? Thank you, Linda.
Let's move on to something more fun.
So we had a great presentation for all the students at the end of this school year, which was wonderful, right? So, um, there's a proposal to start a little pilot project there, and you can see the cost there. Um, but I don't think we need Linda to get into too much detail. It's a pretty small amount. I mean, I'm definitely supporting it and see how things go, and hopefully it can be respected, the kids can do it, and, uh, we'll have some, uh, a project that kind of gets off the ground and maybe can roll out it to a bigger, bigger level.
I mean, can we move some of these things down to the consent agenda? And like, if we're in agreement on the, all the tax litigation settlements and instead of bringing them back forward to?
Uh, if the board supports that, that would be great, and including the, the error that we made regarding the policy.
Yeah, I can, we can do the policy.
Some of these items, if there's not, um, the reservations about it, and then vote on them tonight, that'd be very helpful. Thank you, Mark.
So are you talking about combining like the regular business, do a consent, do them as one? Do they have to be separate?
I have, I have the tax settlements down in the regular business, asking you to approve. I was just providing you a summary of them before you vote on them.
Okay, so under, we can approve them under regular business, can we move composting down there? To approve that?
Composting, I wasn't really looking for.
I'm in support of it. So if it was very good idea, and it was very good presentation, I'd like to speak for everybody. Um, but if nobody opposes, put it there for a vote as well as the.
AB, you're talking about AB and AE. Moving, making a motion to move those two items down to either the consent agenda or regular business for a vote.
Yes.
I don't know, yeah, we can do that. Board members, okay, wait. Any, any questions or concerns? All right, so we'll move on to regular business. We'll take care of the two discussion items, B and E. So we'll start with B. Actually, we'll move the B to B. How about we do that? Safety plans, safety policies, all be all together. Um, so the first one will be the composting project. Any questions or comments? Motion by Mark, second. Michelle, all those in favor? Approved. They will move to, um, approval programs for residential disabilities. Any questions or comments? Need a motion to approve that. Kathleen, second. Joanne, all those in favor? Approved. Item B, district-wide safety plan, the SOR agreements, and the school's safety plans, committee's second reading policy number eight, one, three, zero. Questions or comments? See none, need a motion to approve that. Mark, second. Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. We now have the item C contract for Boise Services. Questions or comments? See none, need a motion to approve that. Michelle, second. Kathleen, all those in favor? Approved. Do we have to do the tax litigation separately, Linda? Do you want the separate resolutions that have to be done that way, or can we do them separately? You prefer us, so they're not combined, got it, okay. Item D, the first one is the Green Bush Hospitality Tax Litigation Proposal. Need a motion to approve that. Joanne, second. Kathleen, all those in favor? Approved. Item E, the Ransor County Plaza Regal Cinemas, need a motion to approve that. I see Mark's hand up. Anyone else, second? Michelle, all those in favor? Approved. Next item is the Target tax litigation. Is somebody else a chance? Need a motion to approve that. Jennifer, second. Michelle, all those in favor? Any opposed? The recommended policy. The county sales tax revenue was good, that's what we like about that part, right? Um, tax litigation proposal, the Art OCO Green Bush Station, need a motion to approve that. Jennifer, second. Kathleen, all those in favor? Any opposed? Approved. I think that's everything, right, Linda? Got more?
Uh, one more.
Yep, I just meant the tax litigation ones. Anything sneak in there? So the, what is known as the Early Childhood Center, um, I guess they call it, right? Data Privacy Plan, because we have the, um, agreement as, as a provider for some of our pre-case students. And this is a, um, plan around the data for our children in the program there as a private provider. Any questions and comments on that? See none, need a motion to approve. Michelle, second. Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. All right, so we got through a lot of items there. Uh, committee reports, we'll start with Marissa.
Thank you, Mr. Bino. Um, in terms of staffing, we currently, um, have welcomed on board thirty new employees. Um, and we are going to be holding a new staff orientation on Monday, August twenty-second and Tuesday, August twenty-third. We have a really great program planned. Um, just to give you some brief highlights, um, Mr. Tuker is going to be doing an overview of our district safety training. Um, I'll be providing, um, all of our new staff with, um, policy updates, how to request time off, um, all that good stuff. Um, Mrs. Wager's office will be going over payroll and benefits and making sure all our new staff know, um, the health insurance options that they have, the dental plans, and also some of the voluntary benefits such as the 403B and flexible spending. Um, we have a cultural competency, um, training that one of our E and L teachers, Jennifer Karaher, has agreed to provide. Um, Mr. Goodwin is going to be doing our education law two-D and data protection training. And Todd Weatherall is going to be doing our district network training and making sure all of our new staff are able to, um, navigate into their email accounts and just make them, um, familiar with the, uh, Google Suite. Um, Mr. Stiles is going to be providing an introduction, um, to instruction and curriculum in our district. Um, our PPS department is going to be doing a program overview of our special education. And, um, we also have, um, two sessions on social emotional learning tools. Um, we'll be talking about the importance of our teachers and teaching assistants maintaining their certifications and navigating from initial to professional. Um, we also will be, um, providing an overview of our district mentor program, um, our professional development opportunities. Mr. Stiles is going to be going over how to access, um, frontline education in my learning plan. And, um, I've, um, invited Mr. Simons to kind of kick off our day and say a few opening remarks. And I've invited our total administrative, total administrative team to welcome all of our new staff members that day. Um, in terms of our open positions, we have one point two art positions that we're currently recruiting and interviewing for. Um, we have, um, two special education positions located at the elementary school level. Um, one point eight physical education positions. Um, we also are currently recruiting for, um, additional teaching assistance. We just received a couple of letters of resignation. And we are in the interview process of our, uh, two twelve-month typists at the Transportation Department. Um, we, um, did make an offer to one individual, um, and that recommendation will go on the August twenty-fourth board agenda. Um, in addition, we have a cook position that's vacant, an automotive mechanic. We are, um, currently, um, moving forward with final interviews for our database specialist position. Um, we will be reposting our assistant transportation supervisor position. And, um, we were able to conduct the administrator for transportation services, um, interviews last week. We do have a candidate that we'd like to recommend for appointment at the August twenty-fourth meeting. Um, and we also, um, conducted final interviews for a CSE chairperson. And again, that'll, that recommendation will be on the next meeting.
One of the things we were able to accomplish, we were very concerned about, uh, hiring two Spanish certified teachers, both for Goff Middle School, and we were able to find qualified certified candidates for those two positions. So, uh, Rosa has been very busy. Uh, the, the hiring, uh, environment is very difficult right now. We've got some very good people that we're able to bring on board, including someone that'd be appointed this evening.
Yes, and I just wanted to say thank you to all of our support staff, our teachers and our administrators for serving on our, um, interview committees. Um, I know they're a long process, and sometimes we're doing, you know, more than one, um, interview at the building level now, so it's much appreciated.
Any questions for Marissa? Definitely the challenges in education and also the healthcare industry are, are just tremendous at this point. So it's unfortunate that seems like we have to, we're changing players in different districts. And, you know, there's a lot of data about the lack of people coming into the colleges and the education prep programs, healthcare industry, a lot of, uh, very needed industries, so, um, sectors of the academy. So hopefully we can see something's changed in the future, but it's definitely challenging. So, thank you, Marissa. Linda?
Not at this time.
Hey, Ryan, I think, you're good, okay. And Jeff? Thank you. Table motions, I have none at this time. Um, board, board members, any other thing for old business that need to bring up? Very good. And, uh, thank you for addressing the Ransor County. Now, in our consent agenda, we have items A through G. Questions, comments, changes on the consent agenda? See none, need a motion to approve that. Kathleen, second. Cheryl, all those in favor? Approved. We do have an addendum for, yes.
Yes, I want to let Kelly Sandborn know that she was appointed. Welcome to the Green Bush and the Goff Middle School.
Thank you for coming. Very nice. A lot, a lot of hires and changes. Now moving on to the addendums, we have physician services, driver physical, and some non-instructional appointments. Any questions or comments there, or any information we need, Marissa, on those?
Um, the non-instructional appointments, those are two, um, new substitute bus drivers. Um, and they will be, um, undergoing some training, um, for the remainder of summer school. They have to meet a certain number of training hours, um, riding our, uh, school buses with students on board. So Jill Bone still will be completing that training, and those two individuals, um, will be moving forward to, um, bid on a permanent route on bid day.
Great. I appreciate the board's flexibility in adding these items because they are very critical positions and, and things that need to be done for the district. very critical positions and the things that need to be done for the district. The quicker we can address those instead of waiting for an additional meeting, it's important to kind of address those as we can and we're here.
Mr. Bino, the well-known contract. That is a continuation of the contract from prior year for our nineteen A physicals for our bus drivers and it is at the same rates as last year.
Good. So I need a motion to approve the physician services, driver physicals. Mark, second. Michelle, all those in favor? Approved. And then a non-instructional support personnel memo, those items for appointments, need a motion to approve that. Jennifer, I need a second. Michelle, all those in favor? Approved. Moving on, new business, board members, anything for the next meeting?
It's the, to reiterate, thank you to Linda and Jeff for working with Soren School.
Yeah, very good.
Cause I think that's going to be a win for all the, the kids of our district and, and you know, our team set, we're down there and use that. So I appreciate that. I see there was some open on the track behind Janay as well, that that is our property.
It is our property. We've, we provided a the bleacher over there was quite damaged. We provided a aluminum bleacher and we're kind of having our architect look at the track surface. That track surface is really, really needs to be dug up and redone.
Yeah, I think so.
It's a more very expensive project. It's basically weeds and grass have grown. We're looking at, you know, appreciate it. Thank you.
I mean, that's one of the, I mean, going by here today was packed with kids and families getting ready for sports. And I think that, that Janay fields that we use, I mean, they're utilized all the time by the community and then inside the district. So I think we should really look at resources into that area to, to help our community and, and our students and expand our field that we can use for practices. Any other new business, board members? Okay, we'll move to the public forum. No public, except for Kelly. And going to the board forum, I'll start at my right with Emily. Anything, Emily?
No, nothing. I'm, I am going to the Leadership and Education event on conference on Friday and Saturday.
Excellent. Yeah, maybe next meeting, kind of give us a, a quick overview of how, anyone else go into that? Nice, nice. Great. Thank you. Joanne? Kathleen?
No, thank you.
Jennifer? No? Mark?
Um, I, I had an opportunity to participate in, in a retreat with Questar. And it brought us up last year and I'm bringing it up again this year because the guest speaker that we have Mike Ford is phenomenal. And, and I really like to try to get him to, to our district and, and, and speak.
Okay.
Because I mean, just a very good speaker.
I know Mike, we happen to contact him. Thinking for the board.
For the board, yes. He's just a very good facilitator and, and of speaker and board business and school districts and he, he's just, you know, this is two years in a really good that I've heard him speak on different topics and I, I just think he's, he's very good speaker. Yes.
So we're looking to plan something next month.
So we were targeting September seventh for a possible retreat. If he's available on such short notice, the board was interested in hearing Mike come. And you had ideas of things you wanted him to help facilitate, you know, he can both present and facilitate. So Mike's a terrific speaker. He was a pharmacist superintendent and he's also done a lot of consulting work.
Maybe if it's, I came to the board, since you've heard him a couple of times recently, Mark, maybe Mike, I mean, myself, Mark, Jeff can get together, kind of get some topics put together and then we can, and then share anything that you'd like to do for that retreat. Do you want to kind of look at our objectives and goals for that area? So if we can weave something in with that kind of conversation, talk about the future of education. I know he does a lot of that kind of thing too, industry, et cetera. So.
Is that typically daytime, evening? When would that happen?
An evening one.
Call him whenever we ask him. Questar, we did it in the evening.
Okay.
And, and he came, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think last year we did it from like six to nine.
You usually do the food dinner.
Bring in some food. Excellent. Thanks, Marks. Shirley? Good. Shirley, anything? Michelle? So this is our, really been out for about four weeks. We're gearing up for a start of school. So I'm sure a lot of people are thinking about the new school year, those of you who are still parents and have kids in the community school. So it's gonna be fun times. It's my, kind of bittersweet for me. Like I said during graduation, last child has graduated from the district. So yeah, looking forward to all the new staff in a couple of weeks. So I have a new staff orientation. And again, exciting times, kind of hopefully getting back to some, some normalcy in our community and our district as we get through at least the COVID side of things, right? All right. If there's nothing else, we do have need for executive session. We anticipate any board business after the meeting. So need a motion to move into executive session. Kathleen, need a second? Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. Thanks, everybody. Good night.